So we'll open the meeting for Monday, May 8th. Entertain a motion except the agendas may be amended.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there anything that we need to move around that's not already here?
I'm gonna just, no, hold on a second. No, I'm good the way it's written right now.
Okay. Technically, anything new would have to go under other business anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Start going through the minutes.
I'm gonna table April 10th. I just got this last night, so I don't really, and then I'm gonna table April 24th. That came this morning. Okay, 'cause I just came this morning.
Yep. And then you have the 27th?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the meeting of April 27th, which is a special select board meeting, and I believe it was just Chris and I.
Yes.
And there was no action taken. I get a second?
Second.
Aye. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st.
Yeah.
The same thing.
Basically, the same thing.
Same thing. Here, the motion was to appoint Glenn Burris at the E-911 coordinator. So, motion to approve that. You got a second?
Second.
Aye.
And that's you guys.
Aye. So, yeah, I just didn't get a, and there was some, I went through it quickly, and there was a couple of mistakes in here. One, I don't know, the one that she gave us, she kinda had mixed up veto, reappointing, and the other person stepping up. Yeah, so she just had it wrong, and I told her that, but I didn't have time to read it all the way through. So, we approved two, and we just didn't move.
Table two.
And we tabled two.
Yep. Okay. Select board concerns that aren't already on the agenda?
Just, if we can get these minutes more, get this agenda or whatever on Fridays instead of Sunday.
Okay. You good, Chris?
Yep, I'm great.
Okay. So, you guys and anybody that's tuned in, are you looking for something that's not already on the agenda to bring up? Let us know. You got a hand up over here? Okay.
I'll be very brief. Recently, Andrew McKenna sent a letter about the status of the babies and stuff on River Road.
Okay.
Locked his property. I look around now, I don't agree fully with his characterization. I think things are better than they were last year, certainly better than they were in the fall. Those creatures are gonna come back and do their thing, but I think we'll keep an eye on that. He is my neighbor, I'll work with him. I wouldn't do anything while the babies are still nursing from their mother. I'll kill their mom, but not while she's nursing. And I'll be at it again in the fall. Death in my way.
Well, typically, we're not supposed to traffic until that season anyway.
Right.
And what I did is I, we have the permit for the whole corridor, and because the water was up some places, I had Nicole come out and actually took pictures, and she's working with the streams people to deal with that.
And Nicole was there during, right after the last rain or whatever. I know it's gone down kinda quick in the last couple of days or whatever, so you can even see it on River Road over in the big area that it's kinda come down, so.
Yeah, that gate's opening up too.
Yeah, I saw that.
Things are, I believe, improving.
It's looking more like channels.
Actually, the only modification we got with the, because when we had the big erosion thing happen in December, we're going there, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be having them widen the opening that's from the state. They wanna make it the same width as the, as the stream channel.
Excellent.
So, it's gonna widen like 10 extra feet.
Right.
And then, we're gonna be doing some work on the bank.
How will he get out there, McKenna?
Well, he's, it's shallow enough, he can get out with the machine on it.
Okay. Oh, that's great. Okay, that's the first one. Second is, I've been, last couple of years, I put all the work in that shack, Archie Baker Shack, corner of River Road and Archie Baker. There's a B yard going in there. A lot of the neighbors stop by, everybody's very positive about it. I think the tourists and people like the boardwalk, they're all gonna like that. And I need a little bit of cooperation from the snow removal highway guys. Last year, they put snow bags like 20 feet on the land, a few feet from the door, making that thing pretty unusable. Over the last few years, I've been cutting the weeds down, and the road is continuously encroaching on the land. This is in December, it's worse now.
You know what, you're gonna have to, this is not a select board, this is for, take that to the town manager, because I don't, that's getting into, the town has area and plow.
Yeah, and basically.
Okay, it might have been because they were doing bridge construction, and they were limited where they could go and what they could do.
Yeah.
We'll look at that one.
Yeah, take, take that out with chat there or whatever.
Ricky and I will figure it out with you.
All right. Now that we're on, on recording and everything, I don't know what that building was, but somebody's gonna have to come forward with the zoning permit to, if it's a change of use of going into a business because, whatever. That's gonna have to.
Take a look at it.
Yeah.
So, it's going to a business?
Well, if you're just putting bees on, it'd be agriculture, and that's generally in with most residential zones.
Just like you did too. You came in, I mean, people can't just, you came in your house, if you put your beehives, this is a building that used to be whatever, I don't know what it was.
Looked like a hunting shed. It looked like.
Just storage. It was never inhabited.
Okay.
Stop by, take a look, okay.
I see it all the time, 'cause at the end of Archie Baker, I cut that guy's.
What, on 120 square feet? I don't know.
Damn. 144. Under 144, you don't need a permit, right?
Okay. Alrighty, I'm not seeing anything else up.
No.
'Cause if they open it, moves to the top.
Listeners.
So, we go to liquor control. Lucretia, you have a few here for us?
Yes, I do. So, so let's start with some of, so let's start with the wine festival, Killington-Pico Area Association. The wine festival is July 21st and 22nd. So, on the 21st, it's gonna be up at the Peak Lodge, and on the 22nd, it'll be at the K-1 Lodge. And they're gonna be, in addition to the interior, they're also gonna be using the second floor of the lodge and the outdoor patio with fencing for the event.
Do you really need a motion from us, or is this more of a?
Yeah, just, I think, I think that would be appropriate, since this is a pretty large event, I think it's, and I think in the past, you've always done a motion to approve it.
Okay, they're calling it an education sampling event?
Yeah. Because of the, they have individual, they have individual brewers or whatever, you know, that come, and they have, they can sell, they'll have to apply individually to the DLC for a permit, but, and they, they are strictly regulated as to how much they can pour, and I think how much they can give out and whatnot, but.
I'd like to go to that school. I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with Killington-Pico Area Association, one-time occasion, education sampling event permits.
I'll second it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one I wanna skip down to is the MCR TNP, which is the Killington Mountain Lodge. They did not submit their outside consumption permit at the same time that they put in their first and third class, so they, they put it in now, and it is in the same area that they have permitted in the past, which is behind the building near the, near the outdoor pool.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with outside consumption pit permit for MCR, TPM, whatever, 1 LLC.
Okay, second.
Aye.
Aye.
And then, we have first, third, and outside consumption for Mountain Song Inc., doing business as River Shed.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the same outside consumption area, which is that deck in the front of the building.
The deck on to the side, yep.
Yeah. Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward for first, third, and outside consumption for Mountain Song Inc., otherwise known as River Shed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we already looked at the deck as opposed to their parking, or in regard to their parking, and it doesn't have an effect on it?
The change in the zoning regulations that we just passed.
Yeah.
Helped them out there.
Yeah.
Because it was not needing the 50-foot setback, but now it needs the 20-foot.
The deck is in an area where you couldn't have parked anyway, 'cause it's where the bank goes down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they're good now anyway.
They're good.
All right.
And that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a certificate here of?
Certification of compliance with the town road and bridge standards. This is an annual signature. It's the state orange book, which basically tells us what culvert sizes we have to use, what gravels we have to use on the roads. It's for grants. Well, you can all have one, this is the, I got, we have one we have to sign, I didn't pass those out. But basically, it's just that we comply, we've done our inventory for our roads, which we have, and.
Make a motion to adopt a certificate of compliance for town road, bridge standards, and network inventory.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Do you need to add anything?
No.
Not really? Okay.
It's just our annual adoption of those things.
All in favor.
He's got one over here with the date on it.
Aye.
And Vermont run 100 on 100 relay race? Permission?
Basically, they, he requested permission, even though the 100 by 100 doesn't actually travel on any town roads, it's on 100 Route 4 and then 100 again. And he just wanted us to know that they're gonna be passing through again this August 12th, and wanted to make sure that there was no objections. So, is there any conversation?
I thought they came up the Killington Road.
I thought they ran up the top of.
He said, he said they're going that way.
I thought the last couple of years, they ended up at, up at K-1. They go up, 'cause they run up the, I thought they ran up to the top of, I, yeah, I'm reading this, but.
The same previous year, which we did, will be. No.
To run through.
Killington Road and East Mountain Road, a p portion of it.
Yeah, so that's what I mean.
All right. So, he's requesting permission to travel through there.
Great.
They're always good for beer.
So, what we're gonna have to start watching on this is as we start doing work, like, I mean, we're doing.
Working on the road.
Are we working on, are we working on East Mountain Road?
On August 12th.
Well, I mean, it's a Saturday, but, you know, we're just gonna have to let them know.
Right now, Killington Road has, I mean, East Mountain Road has already been reclaimed, and they're starting the paving now, it'll be done in the next couple of weeks.
Right. I'm just saying in future, like, we start ripping up Killington Road and sidewalk, you're just gonna have to let these people know.
Yeah.
And make a motion to approve the Vermont 100 on 100 relay race, allowing to use the Killington Road sidewalk and the East Mountain Road?
Yep.
Second.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else, I'm not seeing any hands up. So, all in favor of, I guess it's giving permission, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And do we know if David's on?
David is on.
I saw Green Mountain, there he is.
There he is. Hey, David, you're up.
So, David, we wanted to talk about the course fees, it was a question that, you know, some people approached the select board about the changes in the fees.
I, I receive questions about the fees, but then, I'm also like, we're used to each year before the season opens saying, this is the fees, so.
He's muted.
You're muted, David.
Or no. Or we're muted.
He's talking, we can't hear him.
Asked on, it says asked on mute.
Well, he's.
Says he's not muted. Lucretia can, or Peggy, can you talk? So we know it's not on our end? Peggy?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay.
So, David, you're muted right now. Now you're not. Can you talk? Yeah, we're not getting anything. We're not getting anything from your computer. We're not lis, we can't hear you.
You gonna restart it? Yeah, I'm just gonna restart it.
No, restart your computer hookup. You're not in.
That's good, Chad, you gotta restart from this.
Well, it should only be a minute.
That's what I thought he meant.
Yeah, no, I think you called it right on the head. Shoulder season of a green season.
That's the beginning, early in late.
What's the, do you know what the cutoff is for shoulder seasons?
We'll find out once he comes back.
He's not back yet. We'll be restarted, his whole computer is gonna take a while to reboot.
I'll move on to the fire.
Do you wanna do the department register?
Why don't we go to the?
Fire department?
Managers report.
Paving project updates. We have three roads that have been reclaimed. East Mountain Road, which was reclaimed and going to be graded, rolled and repaved, and Old Coach Road, which is going to, has already been reclaimed, and it will be excavated and new gra, new gravel base put in. And we also reclaimed Johnson Road, which was not part of the plan, but it was so bad this year, we actually broke a plow post, so we reclaimed it, graded it, and we're gonna be putting that in for being repaved next year potentially.
Okay, so we're done with paving projects?
Yep.
Could you just?
He's connecting to the audio now.
Could you just tell them where Johnson Road is? 'Cause.
Johnson Road is out by the, out by Craig Mosher's and Hadley Hill Road. It's a horseshoe type of road, and the state uses it as a turnaround for the, whatever district it is, it's Woodstock.
Okay. Let's try David.
You there, David?
Still nothing.
Something's not working.
Your mic's not working or something.
Not much we can do, we can't get him.
Hey, Jerry Russell, can you talk to us to see if it's just really David's microphone? Or Robert Montgomery, what?
Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's David's microphone.
David, something wrong with your computer mic.
Okay, whatever that was.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to look at another time then to do that. I know it'll be late, but.
It's already late anyway, so. All right, let's.
Do we have anything to discuss with capital purchases or?
Yeah, I mean, capital purchases, this is, this form here that you have, the open sheet, basically, with including all of the proposed and the most recent update of the capital layout. Basically, this year, we're the town, well, there's $155,000 going into the capital fund, $100,000 was from the town, and $55,000 from operations, which is about $155,000 in revenue. And with the purchases that are recommended, that do not include the gators, is $163,000, so we're about $8,000 over budgeted on an annual basis. I don't think that's an enormous number to be over, and this is for the 23, 24 capital purchases. And the board would need to decide to spend the extra $8,300 out of golf operations money or out of their cash, and then authorize this to move forward.
So, we're authorizing what pieces now?
It is.
What color, the green?
Ground master. It's, it's the green or the, or the numbers. If you look over on the left side for the current year, there's, there's five requests. One is a Yamaha UMAX Rally, one is the, one Pro Gator, one Toro Ground Master 3500, one 3320 by Toro, and an Agrometal. And all of those together add up to the $163,000 a year. So, it's the, it's the five requests on the left side.
Are we gonna get them?
Well, probably this time next year, you know how it looks.
And are they gonna stick to this price?
Yeah, this price, as far, as far as I know, this price is fixed, but that, I would have to confirm with them.
I thought they told us they couldn't confirm that.
I don't, I, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the question is, do we put the order in and order them and then?
They said, they told us that they can order stuff, and if.
We can walk away.
You can walk away, but we don't have anyone here to confirm that, and, I mean.
And what about all the other equipment we've ordered? We haven't not, we haven't gotten the loader attachment yet.
No, and there's one other whole piece we haven't gotten yet.
Right. And this, and this stuff here, you're telling me is already going over the 155 that we have per year?
Yeah, right.
So, and we don't have Mark here either to run through where he's at. I mean, it's like I'm going in blind. I, I got questions, but I don't have anyone to give me an answer. So, unless you can answer that there's $163,000 here.
Yes.
And we're only putting $155,000 in a year.
Correct.
Okay? But don't we already have other stuff that we're paying right now?
Yes, this includes that. This includes all the payments. If you look at the previous year, the stuff we've received for the 23, 24, if you look up at the top, the triplexes are there. So, the current things, the utility cards.
Okay, so with the current stuff that we have, it all adds up to 100?
It all adds up to 163.
Okay. And then, are we leasing this? Are we buying this?
These are leases.
And then, where is the interest rates that we're getting on these?
Well, that's what I was looking at too, our interest rate on this.
10% for a $9,000 purchase for the Pro Force debris blower, but if you look into, I think at one point, we made it, we, we made a rule.
10 and under, we were buying.
10 and under, we were buying. So, why are we paying, I mean, 10%, 15% on a 14?
Well, that's, that's what they're just guessing at this point, they don't know. That's the ones that are requests. But again, we could go to our bank and finance these separately. You don't have to go to their.
We pay six and a half points on this.
Right. So, I mean, I'm not, the question is, is the overall payment based on those rates is this number, but we can go, we can go look for it or finance it.
But that's not the question. The, the question is, is that we need to approve as three board members, a long-range capital plan with actual numbers of what we can do. And if they're telling us that it's $163,000 a year with the other stuff, but now we're getting 10% and 15% interest, you know, if we can get this through our regular, like 6%, then maybe we're down under $8,000 from the 155.
Right.
So, can we get a comparison from our bank as opposed to theirs?
Well, the issue is, is this is, this is a year out. You know what I mean? Like, you're not gonna have them for a year, and we would have to do that evaluation at the time. You know what I mean? Like, I can, I can do it with today's numbers.
Yeah.
We're paying 4.4% according to the letter I got from, if we were to go get something now, like four or four and a half from our bank.
But we don't have David online, I mean, I'll save that for later.
But I also, it's, it's pretty tough to go out there and say, John Deere, okay, we'll buy a $40,000 piece of equipment from you, when you haven't even delivered what we asked for in the first place.
Right.
I, that makes no sense to me. We have a, we have a tractor that's worth, what, 30% of what it should be worth? Doesn't have a bucket on it. I, I just find that unacceptable.
Maybe John Deere is not.
I wouldn't have accepted the tractor without the John, without the bucket on it. I mean, it's just, that's crazy.
I'd like to, I'm gonna make a motion to table.
Yeah, I would table.
Yeah, I agree.
Until somebody can talk to and.
Get our explanation.
A lot of explanation.
All in favor tabling the possible purchase for golf course, please say aye.
Aye.
We got a question on that for you guys.
Yep.
Just, I know what yours is.
And that was, I'll tell Megan who, but just please say your name.
Yeah, sure, Patrick, I think. Does this ever get looked at on like a secondary market where it's, I mean, I know you don't have the warranty, you don't have stuff, but if you can just get it at least, like, is that ever thought about? Or is it always going through the dealer as new?
So, right now, what we have is, is we have a golf management group.
Yeah.
That manages the golf course. This is what they've come to us with, and in normal situations, we get the stuff right away.
Right.
On the last two years, we haven't. So, maybe that's a question, since we've not saying it. No, since we're not, we're not, we're not approving it at this time, when they come back the next time, we could ask that question.
Okay.
All right?
A lot of questions.
But I think what you find out is that the secondary market is, it's just like used cars in the beginning of COVID, you know, for five grand more, if you could wait the year for the car, you got a brand-new car instead of a three-year-old car.
Yeah.
So, we'll wait, so we'll wait for that, those questions to be answered later.
And just the cash flow, it was just a comparison of what the market prepared last November. And basically, he had projected that over the December through April timeframe, we would spend about $172,000, and we spent $139,000, so we're basically $33,000 to the goods, so our projected cash at this point was projected to be $240,789, and the actual is $273,684. So, we tracked a little ahead of what he projected.
And this is where it comes funny, is, is that, you know, we're $29,000 or whatever underneath the spending, I guess, is what he has over here, but is that because we didn't get some equipment?
I know.
You know, so are we really?
Technically.
Do we pay, we do, do we pay for the equipment during the off month?
This is the brown golf budget.
Right.
This is just the operations budget, this doesn't include the capital portion of it.
Okay. All right, that answers that question.
I think they're trying to get back in there.
So. Well, there he is.
Might want to have another computer. And it says waiting room message. There we go, he's back in.
He's in now.
Connecting to audio.
I did today with the.
Can we hear you now, David? Now you're muted. David?
Unmute yourself, please.
I don't think you can hear us now.
I think he's floating there.
There we go.
There we go. All right.
So, did you find a new computer?
No, no, just set the, update this one. Sorry about that, everyone.
So, we made a motion to table the Green Mountain National Long Range Capital Plan 'cause we had a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, number one question is, is do we expect to get any of this equipment in this year?
That's a question I can't answer tonight. So, I would have to check back with Robert and have him call the vendors and, and get in contact with them, I can have an answer by, by the end of the week.
Okay. And then, the next question is, is that we have a rule that anything under $10,000 or $10,000 and below, we're automatically buying. That was one of the rules. So, there's a Pro Force debris blower.
Okay, yep. What's for you, a lot?
You know, but that's $9,800. You know, but that's ninety-eight hundred dollars. Why would we go out and finance that at ten percent? I don't know why. You know, um, and then, I mean, last year when we were talking about this project, you know, capital project, the long range, John Deere and them told us, or whoever, Toro.
Toro also.
Told us that we placed the order and we don't know if the price is gonna be the price and we get to cancel it out if we wanted to. Does that still stand?
Yes, that is currently the way it is when you're buying golf course machinery.
Okay. So we don't really know what the price is.
Correct.
Okay. And we really don't know what the interest rate is.
Correct.
And then we have another question of, you know, we got, what, what equipment was that without the?
Well, we got, we purchased the tractor last year and we still don't have the loader attachment. Are we any closer to getting that?
I will, I will check back with that as well.
Because to me.
And we have the, 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 yeah, the tractor is on premises. It has been in use, but we still do not have a, that front loader at that.
And to me, it seems just crazy to award someone another forty thousand dollars in equipment when they haven't delivered to us what we ordered before.
I, I agree with that. We'll put some pressure on them to try.
All of the stuff that we're talking about right now is Toro. There's no John Deere.
We're ordering a John Deere.
Oh, the, the Gator, yes, the Gator, yes. The Gator is that one, yeah.
I refuse to give anybody business who hasn't delivered.
I agree.
So. I think we got a lot of questions here, David, and it would be great to like figure out where this capital plan's going.
Okay.
And so that, then that way we can make, because these are longer-term commitments. It'd be great to hear from these companies in terms of what they expect is gonna be a delivery. I just cannot believe that we think we're gonna buy a twenty, twenty-three Gator, but it might not show up until whenever or any of this.
I understand your frustration that's a little.
So.
I guess one of the other questions from the audience was, since we know we may never get this stuff, have we ever priced out the secondary market for something that might be out there of a twenty-two or a twenty-three or whatever? Or if there is any such market out there?
There, there is a market out there, but again, I will, um, talk with Robert, who's the golf course superintendent, for those who don't know on the call, and Jonah, who's our head mechanic. They're the experts in this field. What we tend to see, from my experience of, of viewing all the magazines and the literature, is machinery that is about as old as ours comes up for sale. So we're not doing ourselves any real favors by purchasing that.
No one sells a year-old one.
Yeah, and, and, and that's what we kind of.
No one does.
That makes sense.
And what we, what we came, what we said while you were out was that if there was something out there a year or two old, they're probably only like a couple thousand dollars less than something brand-new and you don't know what it went through the last year or two.
Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly what happens.
Yeah. So we had tabled this so we can get some better answers and so we're gonna keep it tabled. We went through the projected cash flow and, you know, we're good on that. The only question I wanted to make sure was is that the, the less fees wasn't because of capital, and this is not capital expenses in this operating thing, but this is from Mark anyway, not from, this is not from David.
No, this is Mark. This is intern. This is the comparison of what he gave us in December to now.
Right, so.
What he projected.
So, so let's get back to the cost fees then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, you'd like me to speak?
Yeah.
And what you see here is a fairly, I mean, the, the price increase is, is, um, in line with, with cost increase, I like to call it. And we started there back, I mean, when, when, when we, I mean, deep and a Great Life Golf, Brown Golf, and John, back in, uh, when was it, eighteen or nineteen, whatever it was, and I think our head, our highest green fee was probably eighty-nine dollars or something like that. We need to get ourselves into a position where we can obviously maintain and, and, and keep the golf courts in the facility where it needs to be. We're still under that a little bit, but my philosophy as a manager and knowing the people that play there that pay these season's passes, you, I need to be a little sensitive to the increase. We, we, we're a two thousand dollar golf course for a season's pass, there's no question, probably more. But make that jump right now is just not feasible. So those small incremental increases is what you see there. And then green fees is very, very similar, up to the point, if we can scroll down a little bit, Chet, the shoulder season is sort of by the by. Where our bread and butter is, is right there at our daily fee at one twenty-nine. There are the groups of four and eight people that come in. If you're a group of twelve, you get the Vermont rate for one oh nine. That's our group rate. Our group rate starts at twelve players. And then if you have a, a group of twenty-four or more, you get our resident rate, which is that ninety-nine dollar rate. So, um, majority of our business is, is right there around one oh nine with, if you average everything out. And, uh, certainly a little bit better than in two thousand and one where it was eighty-six. And then that just represents the, the, the cost of everything increasing. And, um, I, I see Green Mountain National within the next six years of being a two hundred dollar golf course. I think that's, that's meritating, um, if you look at it in six-year terms. And the, the other fees, the nine holes, the juniors, the twilights, that's just, that's basically based off that, that, that rate or daily fee.
How does this compare to our competition?
Uh, Chet has a slide he can show you.
Thank you.
So again, some of these, some of these aren't our competition. Some of these fees are blank. If you look at Procter, their membership is already full, so they're not announcing a rate. I mean, their green fee at forty-nine dollars is, is, is understated, but they have so many members that you can't get a, you can't get a tee time there.
We're not comparable.
No, the Crown Point Procter is not comparable. Sugar Bush is a little bit in, in what they're charging, um, for their season pass holders. And their green fee is somewhat comparable and a card fee is, is, is there. And I see Stratton and Fox Run as our two major. In, in market comparisons. And, uh, and we've always been under both in terms of membership price. But we've always been in between Stratton and Fox Run, and Fox Run is in Ludlow, that's the old, um.
Ochemo.
Ochemo Valley Golf Course.
Yeah.
And they're certainly a competitor of ours. Um, and we've always been right in between them. And now we've matched Stratton. And, uh, yeah, we've, sorry, we've been under, Stratton's always been a few bucks ahead of us, but you can see the comparison there. Rutland, again, is not really a, a, a market, a competitor for us.
So when, when you talk about seeing it being a two thou, you know, let's say getting up to, um, Fox Run or Stratton or Sugar Bush, the memberships and then the green fees. And then we talk about a resident price, a Vermont price and a town price. And then we talk about, um, because you come from out of town and you got twelve members, you get down to a Vermont price. And then if you come up with twenty-four, you get a resident price. Well, if we, if we believe we're at two thousand dollar, then why are we giving such a break on a group of twelve that if you wanna match the Stratton and Sugar Bush and Fox Run, if I went to play there with twelve people, am I still getting a hundred and fifty dollars? Or am I coming down to a lower price?
I, at, at Fox Run, I don't believe there's a reduction. Um, at Stratton, having run Stratton's golf business, if there's still, I mean, I, again, I don't really know. I would assume that there's a break from group prices. That's something that was inherited when I first, when I first came here. There was, there's a, um, a heavy group of people that have been coming here for, you know, some say twenty years, some, it's, it's been a long time. And that was the, that was the, the process and the procedure that was in place. And gradually over the time that Great Life has been there and Brown Golf, um, we've increased those prices to get them up to where they're actually at an equitable price in terms of being, if you get twenty guys or twenty-four guys and they pay a hundred bucks, you're gonna make money out of it. Um, I think our T-shirt, if we, if we didn't offer a discounted rate for groups of a certain size, I think we'd see a lot in business. Certainly with what I hear, um, with the ability to book group accommodation right now in Killington. I've seen a couple of groups already this season, uh, and that's not the point of the green fee price, but I've already dropped out because I can't find anywhere to start.
I mean, these, these fees are just running by us now. Whatever bookings, I'm sure you got your bookings already at. I'm just saying that in the future, just before you got here, it was when Brown Golf first came in, Steve and I, you were on the board. There was no, um, resident fee and there was no state, and we argued for resident rates at that point. We didn't have it anything to do with the groups. I would just in the future make it, you know, ten, fifteen bucks higher, somewhere in between the resident rate and the, and the actual rate, not make it equal.
I can, I can certainly, I can certainly do that. The reason the rates are the same is, is pure and simple. And Chris, you operated a POS system. There's only so much, and there's only so much stuff that you can put in there. And it, it might be a, a Vermont resident rate slash group rate of twelve-plus players. That's the rate. And that has consistently gone up in the last five or six years. So that, that rate has increased as well. Couple of others, I mean, it, you used to be able to book a group, and if you were the, if you were the group leader, you would get free golf. That doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
We've, we've gotten rid of that. So it's, it's small steps to try to keep these groups of people coming, but not give them sticker shock in one year that they won't come back and get. And that's, that's always been the policy that I've tried to, you know, to run through is to, just do what you can, when you can, not to say, you know, upset a group of people that have been coming here for ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah, but maybe we could grandfather some of them in under a different rate, because I know there's some of those big groups that do come here and they take over properties in town. But, you know, we look at newer business coming in the door and they're looking at us between the difference of, you know, what Green Mountain's gonna offer versus Fox Run or, and/or Stratton. You know, you might wanna think about it a little differently, that's all. In terms of what, in terms of how, what we're offering up there as a rate. But I don't disagree with you at the, you know, the, you've got a lodging problem too.
Yes.
And, um, you know, that's gonna creep its head pretty tough. But we don't have a housing problem, so maybe they'll, maybe they'll rent houses and go from there.
You know, David, the main reason of asking was, is I got phone calls, can we go back to the actual membership fees? The five-day, the seven-day was, you know, I don't make a comment until I see it from the horse's mouth or whatever, or hear it. I was told that there was a drastic change, like, and, and I, I don't see it. Over twenty-one to twenty-three, I see a hundred and ten dollar increase. And I just wanted, I didn't know what the rates were, David. This is what I was really looking for. You know, from a seven-day pass of two thousand and twenty-one, from a thousand thirty-nine to eleven hundred and ninety-nine, I don't see that as a huge increase or shocker, especially like when you say it's a two thousand, it should be up there more when I see what other golf courses are. So I wanted to see it and that's why we wanna see it before the season opens. So when we get asked questions, we got it.
He's stepping it up, is what he's doing.
And that was my bad. I think I, I bulldozed ahead last year and.
We all got used to, we all got used to COVID. COVID's over.
Exactly.
Well, it just helps us defend it when we're.
Yeah, yeah, but we just wanted, we wanted to defend your pricing, but I can't if I don't know.
I, I totally understand. Thank you.
So, so I'm, I'm good with that.
Yep.
All right?
Yeah, me too.
Is Nancy Finn looking to say something on the board there?
Nancy, you're.
I see the name, I don't.
She's not muted and, but no hand raised.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's just that the microphone's uncovered, that's why.
Yeah, so. I don't, I don't see anything, so.
So we're good with.
So basically, David, uh, our meeting is two weeks from today, the twenty-second, and we'll wanna try and have all the details for the capital.
Okay. So details of, of, of what's coming, I'll, I'll speak with Robert.
What we can actually get, what's the situation with John Deere and our, and our loader bucket? Are we gonna get the new thing? And, 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 you know, what are we paying and what are we assuming and, and, you know, these finance rates, I mean, fifteen percent, like, who's coming up with that number?
Well, let's just, maybe we should get Robert to, you know, join us on call or whatever.
Yeah.
Hey, we have enough executive.
We have enough executive sessions. I think, I think the three of us could sit down on an afternoon with Robert and go through it.
Yep.
All right. And I could also bring Aaron in too. He's a great developer of property and he's got a little bit more of a finger on the pulse in terms of pickers rates and dealing with corporate and, uh.
Great.
That would help us as well.
Wonderful.
All right. Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Glad you got your microphone going.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, David. So you got number ten here, fire and rescue department roster. I'd like to, I mean, it's personnel. Can we go into an executive session at the end here and?
Yeah, I just wanted you to see the, you know, we got the roster that I got last week from the chief.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come out and make a.
A motion, right.
A motion after, but it is personnel, so let's get through that at first. I mean, there's a transition status, I guess.
Transition status right now, um, we have. All the fire department assets and things. Um, all the operational assets have been covered in the building at this point, you know, from the lower station and things of that nature. Um, we're working on, we just have to work on getting the naming registered to the town. And, uh, the final letter, the last letter we got from the group asking for some equipment, um, responding to them and the operational stuff will be staying with the town and, like, the, like, the ATV homeless, there's a couple of things, and the rest will be turned over. So I expect that, uh, this month, we will be completely separated at that point from the corporation and the operations will be in full. And in addition, that also includes the lower station as we have no assets stored there at this time.
So when you say the lower station, what are you talking about?
That is the, the River Road lower building. He knows, he wants to say it there.
Other people.
No, I know.
The lower station is on River Road, um, just near the entrance of the road, um, is owned by the corporation. Um, it did have a few, uh, fire department assets in it. We have removed those. That building still belongs to the corporation and we have always paid for the heat and the electricity for that. And now at the end of the season, we are now gonna be transitioning away from paying those bills, which will be included in the correspondence to the town, I mean, to the fire department. Because there's four items that we're addressing. One is, uh, just clarification and agreement on the money that the fire department is donating to the memorial garden. The forty-five thousand dollars that was a, was a restricted fund from, uh, a developer, from Top Ridge, that they're going to be donating to the building and signing that off. Five thousand dollars that was pledged to the fireworks from, during this fiscal year that we haven't received yet. And the, uh, the fire department building, those things will, will then be the, the final transition separate agreement that's going for.
They're keeping.
Well, at this time, they have, they have the option to offer it to the town, but it's their building and it's not part of this department.
So we're moving all our equipment out. I saw some of the firemen on former and present at that building today.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay. So as of today, we've moved all of?
Our stuff out. All of the operational stuff that was for the town is moved out.
Okay. So there's nothing in there for the town?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
They have, they have like their, their, their grills and, you know, all the stuff that the corporation owns is in there at this point.
Okay.
Tents and things like that.
Right. So insurance is dropped from the town on that building?
Well, that, I'm notifying them and then we're dropping it. This finished today, so it'll be done this week.
Okay. And then when we had the meeting on the former seventeen, whatever, CASAR members and the request of equipment that they wanted back, this board asked for them to prove what was theirs and what was not theirs.
And I was sent a list now last week with all of the stuff that they had receipts for and things of that nature, but some of it included operational assets that are part of the transition agreement.
So receipts from where?
From different places they were purchased.
So they were purchased, but when I read the last newspaper article last week, I believe, it states that, and this is quote from a former CASAR officer who was a corporate person, okay, stating that their equipment that they purchased with fundraisers and grants. Fundraisers and grants are raised from CASAR, which is a town unit.
Correct.
Okay. So a volunteer group, just because I work for the volunteer, when you said, I could give you a receipt for something, but if it came from funds from, that was a grant, why are we giving our equipment up?
We're not. I mean, the, the reality is, is in the transition agreement, it said operational assets that were corporate acquired, that were operational to the thing they agreed to.
What this board asked you for was, there was a list of material.
Right.
And you're supposed to come back to us with what they showed.
Right.
That they purchased on their own, not with funds that were raised for, by the town for CASAR.
Right, and I'm doing that right now.
Okay.
Because I just have that list and I haven't been able to get through, because I want to go back and look in the purchase and the, our town checks and things like that for reimbursements.
Because I would hate, I mean, on that list was ATV helmets, and I could swear we just got the ATV.
Yes.
So we could have just got the ATV helmets.
Right, they're, they're not being, they would not be part of what's being turned over.
Okay, so I just want to see that list.
So can we see that as a board, though?
Yes, because what I was going to do is I got to create the letter, the response letter, and then I send it to you guys.
Okay.
So they say, this is what, this is what I have, I'll send you a copy of the whole thing before I issue it.
Yeah, so we just, before anything is handed back.
Right.
We ask for the list.
That's correct. Yeah, that's all part of the transition agreement, which is with the town and you guys are the town.
And you just got this list the other day?
Last week.
Okay, I would probably state that the next time that you're quoted that in the newspaper, I would say that you've not received that, because it didn't say that. It sounded like we haven't done anything yet.
Well, they gave us the list, then I got a, a subsequent thing, because I said they have to provide ownership, so I got that.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that. Me giving you a receipt that somebody bought something is not saying who bought it.
I have not gone through that, I have not gone through all the details of that list yet.
Someone had to go buy it, but that doesn't mean they spent their own money.
That's what I mean.
Right.
There's like a stretcher in there and some other stuff that's, you know.
So we'll see it.
We'll see it later.
Yeah, because I know the, the chief had also gone through the list and told me what things were operational and what weren't, so I'm just trying to disseminate all this.
All right.
So that's where that is.
So then you're up to department updates.
The roster's going to be in executive session.
Yes.
And then we'll come out and make.
Updates for the department?
Yeah, basically, just on the highway side, there, there's continuing the work on the sweeping. We should be done here in the next few days, and regrading is going on throughout the town. We are reconstructing Old Coach Road, as I mentioned earlier, and we're also going to be replacing some culverts along River Road this year in preparation for a potential paving project next year, depending on how we budget. It is getting messy where we're not going to be able to do a mill and, we're not going to be able to do a mill and pave. We might end up having to reconstruct if we wait too much longer, so we're going to try and expedite that.
So on River Road, Ricky was talking about not knowing if, like, one of those two culverts that are buried underwater, if it was because that they're too low at this point now, that it's overtaking? Nicole said it may be that they're clogged or whatever?
The one we know on the, on the inlet side was slightly clogged. Some stuff, some debris had gotten in there, so that was cleared and it started passing some water. So, but we are, we are reviewing that to make sure.
But when we do this rebuild of the road, Ricky was also talking about maybe raising the, the culvert a little bit, so being, raising the road too?
Yeah, we want to, you, you know, basically if we raise, when we replace these culverts, we may be raising it, you know, the road maybe a foot.
Yeah.
In those areas, and we'll just deal with it, some of that that way, so we continue to have enough cover over the culverts.
And that might help some of the other areas with, a foot is a lot.
Yes, it is.
On the paved part or the dirt part?
Basically, we, that's about what we raised Archie Baker, about a foot at the bridge.
Okay.
So.
So that's it for department updates?
No, I just, on the, the, on the fire side, for everybody who's already aware, but I'll announce it anyway, Jim Fiore passed away this past weekend, and the fire department is, has been doing some, some ceremonial.
Mm-hmm.
Work with, with the family and things of that nature to try and make, you know, to, I know that the fire department went to the hospital when he passed, so that when he, when he transitioned, they were there.
Yeah.
For that, so.
As they should.
And they brought him home to Everett for the service.
Yeah.
And then they're going, once they get that squared away, they're going to do a celebration of life up here.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, I'll find out about that.
Yeah.
Is that it on department updates?
Yeah, well, and then I have, yeah, it's a department updates. Also, a couple of other items that aren't, just, well, some just came in, like the, going to be signing the easement survey for the section 1B of, of Killington Road. It's a $6,000 survey request to create the plan that will, will cover the, all of the easements for the, the landowners adjacent to it. I have a proposal, a proposed grant for the Rutland County Solid Waste. It's a $5,000 grant designed to promote and provide educational activities about reuse and recycling, expand reuse and additional recycling opportunities, replace systems relying on single-use disposable items, establish or enhance partnerships or collaborations among municipalities, schools, nonprofits, and other institutions, increase participation in reuse and assist additional recycling, pull in additional resources or catalyze reuse and additional recycling activities in the Rutland County Solid Waste District, and it will save valuable resources from entering the waste stream and create a long-term and sustainable goal for reducing waste to maintain after three years. This is a 50%.
Can we push this to the next meeting so we can read through it?
Yeah. That's fine. And then the other item is the local emergency management plan with Chris coming on board and, and our annual signing. We have the list of who the call people are for when we have an emergency, and it's the chief, Chief LaHart, Bob Schlachter, and Whit Montgomery are the, the person of contact in each area, with the primary being Chief LaHart.
So can we just word it that it's the fire chief, the police chief?
And, and the assistant.
Assistant.
Yep.
We never know what's going to change or whatever.
Yeah, so it's the chief, fire chief, assistant chief.
Nothing against those three, it's just the same thing.
Now, we're going to fill that out.
We give the town clerk, they can, we can make a motion for who to, to.
Well, that's what we're actually identifying, is who you're identifying for this.
So.
So that's what that is. So if you want to do a motion for that, it'd be great, then I can sign it.
Motion to approve the local emergency management plan, it's a full.
Ask for adoption form.
As adopted.
Yeah, second.
On favor.
Hi. And what else did I have? Oh, just an announcement, Vermont Adaptive is going to be there.
Does someone have to sign this?
I do. I do.
Okay. No, because it's, oh, councilman, select art councilman, okay.
Vermont Adaptive is having their annual event on June 17th. There will be approximately 400 cyclists, we're on three separate routes, and they start, all start at the Skyship Base Lodge, and they go to Killington, at Killington is, or on Route 4 in Killington, and it's just basically a notification that they're going to have cyclists out.
So we got Whit on the line here, and we do have, I mean, is there.
Event permit?
Have they gone to the police? Have they gone to whoever to say, hey, so these guys know that there's a, there's an event permit, right, Whit?
They, they notified us that there's been no permit filled out yet, but I'm aware of it from, from the organizer.
So do you have to normally provide service for when this is going on?
Not every year, last year we did not. A couple years prior we did stuff, but last year we did not.
Yeah, so they should probably file a permit though.
It should be, you know, I mean, we have, it, it has to go so then at least we're clear that they've not, you know, it's, it's got to go, and they say they're not requesting any help from.
Right.
The local police.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is in June and we're meeting in two weeks, so can we just send that back to them?
Yep.
Whit, if you can.
Sure.
Get a hold of Chet and go through with this?
Yes.
To make sure, in case, in case you have to be on and you know that you're on. Route 100 on 100, I know you, you're not involved on that, so.
No.
And on the, when we have this next meeting, you also get a presentation from Rutland County Solid Waste, they're going to be, they want to do a presentation at that meeting, so they'll be here and then you can also go over this.
We can read this and then ask them questions.
Right. Oh, he will be at that next meeting.
Is that it on that?
That is it on that.
So now that we have like everybody pretty much, because there was some late and, not, not late, they got here when they came, because they're just listening in, you know, we go back to the fire department, we talked about Jimmy Fur, James Fury or whatever, and normally when somebody passes away, something like that, I just like to say, let's take a moment of silence for James Fury. Thanks a lot. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session at 7:34 for personnel and contracts, I guess, is what it is. Out of executive session at 7:44, no action taken in executive session. I want to say that we need the fire chief to go over these names.
Yeah.
And let's table it till.
Till we can all meet.
We can all meet and go through it.
Okay.
Motion to table?
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi. So it's his input, right?
Yeah. And I only see two people now.
Yeah, that's all right. So second exec. You touched, you know, the paper touched it.
Yeah.
We have our second citizen's input. Whit?
It's Whit.
Patricia?
Patricia.
Anything?
I don't have anything.
Patricia?
Nope, not for me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we have, are going to go back into executive session at 7:46 for contracts and personnel.
Is that this vision?